Call a meeting in order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming, everybody. We started off our Thanksgiving week today and all that fun stuff. Uh, let's see. Roll call, please.
Sandy Kufal.
Here.
Chris O'Regan.
Here.
Kristi Hilton.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, here. Joanne Shurkey.
Here.
Mark Bouchard.
Here.
Hey, we're all present at Confor.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda and add new business 14B, appointing interim captains for the fire department.
Support. Okay, a motion of support. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Uh, bill's payable. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pay bills payable in the amount of $96,810.83.
Support.
Okay, a motion of support. Any discussion on that?
Yeah. Find it. Where is it?
Election equipment?
Yeah, election. It refers to election equipment that we had to pay, and I was wondering how much the state pays for it.
The state paid for all of the actual, um, technical equipment. What's that, $800 and some dollars?
$82 dollars and some cents or something.
$873.35. That was for two of the storage cases for the equipment that the state purchased. It holds the touchscreen and the printers. Otherwise, we had to keep repackaging them in boxes, and so the state made the investment. We want to protect them. Cases were like $375 apiece.
Well, it's well worth it because they sure were a mess for a long time.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay, thanks. I just want, want to bring that out so that the people know.
Okay, any more discussion on the bills payable? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Sure, yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shurkey.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Uh, next we have public comments. Do we have any public comments on anything? Seeing none. Last chance. Okay, seeing no, no public comments. Move right along to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, um, including the board meeting minutes of November 6th and the synopses. Check reports, October assessing, code enforcement reports, the road watch for the week of November 20th. There was no communication, and there was a request from assessing for certification renewal for $262.50.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any questions or anything on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Moving right along. Highlight of the day, supervisors' report. We do have a full agenda, so I'm gonna try to do this quick. Right, what, 19? Uh, we've been actually doing a lot of work in the past couple of weeks. Well, actually, a couple of months, but, uh, on the Colony Drive, on the, um, they have an old water main, and we're doing a replacement or upgrade on it. And, uh, right now, in the old part, it's like, it's about 90 years old. It's like a three-inch water main, has all kinds of leaks and horrible, um, water pressure. And, uh, it's looking about just to be under a $1.3 million job. It's gonna be funded to all, totally by a special assessment for the property owners down there. And, uh, we're getting all our ducks in a row right now. In fact, we had a big meeting on it today, and, um, and they're gonna start doing, uh, the petition process on it. And, um, if it passes and gets, and the DEQ wants this really bad. We don't really anticipate a, a, a issue with that. You know, the shovels might hit the ground in, uh, April, so, on this project. So, I just want to give the board a heads up on that. We've been working on that. And, as I mentioned, Jack's here tonight. We've been doing a lot of work with, um, our healthcare insurance and, uh, still tying up a few things with the audit. And Kristi and I have been doing, uh, the EVIP for our dashboard, right? Oh, I know. We got a little bit more to do on that.
What does EVIP state?
The economic, what's it stand? Vitalities.
Incentive program.
Incentive program.
It's for state revenue.
So we get our state, state revenue. And, uh, uh, yeah. Last year, I was up till 4:00 in the morning banging that thing out. But Kristi's got a good handle on it. We, we have had a couple of me, uh, meetings with the firefighters' union. It's MA, MAF, Michigan Association of Firefighters, and we do have one, uh, coming up tomorrow. And I'm actually optimistically hopeful on that. We're going over our SOGs, uh, standard operating guidelines, and getting that, uh, going over that. And actually, that will be coming to our board for approval. But, uh, that's been going as good as we can hope for, really. Have a meeting set up with the city manager of Elginak and, uh, staff of the Elginak Clay Library. We have a, go over a few issues of what's going on there, and just want to educate the new city manager how things work, uh, with that. And, um, they're, um, actually, they, they, they're in dire need of new carpeting. I told them, get some quotes and bring it in front of our board, and they have to bring it in front of Elginak Board for that replacement. They have like $50,000 in their account for capital improvement for that type of thing, so, um, I said, get the quotes, bring them in. As long as we have a couple of local ones. I know we got the, uh, Russ across the street, and Enders up in Marine City. So, um, that's gonna be coming soon. We're about 80, 85% done on the second dispatch, uh, the seat in the dispatch center. It's, uh, most of the hardware is pretty well installed. We're gonna have to wait on the state for doing some programming and to get that online. So that's been going well. And, uh, we'll talk about it a little bit in our meeting, but when we set public hearings. But, working on the rough draft, the concept drawings of our proposed kayak access site on Columbine on Harson's Island. And, uh, um, we'll talk a little bit more about that. Upcoming events. Wednesday's the Elginak Lion's Shrimp Dinner. I'll be there. Starts at 6 o'clock, the Elginak Lion's Hall. We, we have our Christmas tree lighting, uh, December 2nd, next door in the Clay Township Park. It starts at 4:00. I think they're gonna light the Christmas tree around 5:00. You have rides of Santa Claus, and, um, they have, um, free hot chocolate and donuts and that sort of thing. Elginak High School Choir's gonna be there singing, um, uh, Christmas carols, and it's actually a really good event. Same day also, December 2nd, in the Clay Township Hall. This is Saturday after Thanksgiving. Tom Watkins will be here doing family portraits, and he does a great job. It's a popular event. We've, what, third time now, I think? Second or third time. But for 30 bucks, you can get an eight-by-10 picture, two five-by-sevens, and four wallets for 30 bucks. And, like I say, it's a good job. Tom does great work, and that's from 12 to 4:00 PM, Saturday, December 2nd. Children's Christmas party at the Pearl Beach Lion Hall, uh, December 17th. Doors open at noon. There's a rumor that Santa's gonna arrive around 1:00 PM, and, uh, he's gonna be, bring gifts for all the kids. Maybe I'll go to that. I'll get a gift. Uh, red ring, red wing, red wing. Bus trip, uh, Friday, January 5th. Leaves at 5:00 sharp at the high school. Uh, skins the Florida Panthers. $78 per person. What's no?
78. Not even made it sound like 78.
Oh, really? Ooh, I'm sorry. Leaves from the parking lot in the park. And, um, uh, we have two tickets left, maybe? Okay, we have two tickets left, so, um, uh, I'll be on that bus, too. So that's it. Uh, like us if you're on Facebook. Like, uh, Clay Township Parks and Rec. And if you have any information, call Cindy, or if you need any more information, call Cindy in the billing department. So that's that. Okay, moving right along. We don't have any unfinished business. So new business, we have vermin and flowers, our health insurance proposal. Uh, Jack and, on front of you, he's got, uh, two proposals, and Jack's had a toothache earlier, so...
Yeah, I apologize. I'm not sure if it's on or not.
Yeah, it's on.
Okay. Um, yeah, so I, I think I'm talking okay, hopefully. Uh, I had no, no fucking today. But going over your, your medical renewal, kind of the handouts I put on, in front of you, that look like this. Couple of things are going on this year with your medical renewal. First of all, we received it from HAP quite a bit later than I would have liked it. So, put together different options. Cindy, Artie, and Kristi and I met together, I think, last week, and did, went over the different options. But kind of looking at the actual renewal itself, they gave us two proposed renewals. What happened is that, under the Affordable Care Act, it's lying Obamacare. Last year, just before President Obama left, the Congress passed a law, and the president signed it. And one of the things is they were leaving it up to the states to determine what is considered either large group or small group. In the past, the state of Michigan was considering who is on the plan. So if you had 50 or more people on the plan, you were considered large group. If you had less than 50 on the plan, you were considered small group. They changed the law. Now it's how many people are eligible, not how many people are on the plan. But if I'm eligible for the plan, maybe I'll let off the coverage. I go on my spouse's plan. That's considered 50 or eligible. It's now considered large group. So Clay Township went from small group to large group. The biggest kind of ramifications of this was a couple of things. Is you went from age banding. So every individual person under the Affordable Care Act has their own price. So a 24-year-old pays less than a 64-year-old. Back to the more traditional, single, two-person family rating structure. So if I'm a two-person, it doesn't matter what my ages are. I have the same rate as everybody else.
So budgeting's easier.
Budgeting's easier. That was more of a positive ramification. Uh, the negative ramification is they took your plan away. So, we had to look at different plans and see kind of what the two options were. Uh, HAP gave us kind of the two plans. You're gonna see the mapped renewal and the proposed. We did look at Blue Cross Blue Shield. We did look priority health. We looked at, I think, 11, 12 different options. And the reality is that even half, even with the renewals, are coming back significantly lower. I think Blue Cross Blue Shield was something like $70,000 more.
Yeah.
For similar plans. So when you look at the top, you're gonna see, the top kind of shows the increases. And I'll back up a step. Probably the traditional, the, the normal increase I've seen this year is about, about an 8%. If you look at the top where it has, uh, kind of in the blue there, it says current then proposed. You'll see, uh, you know, the 474, 927 number, and you'll see a .3%. So a 3% increase. Or the next plan over is a 3.8% increase. That's a little deceiving based on our proposal system. Is our proposal system's taking your premium, and it's also adding into it your health reimbursement account. What you're doing right now, you're reimbursing back the employees for their deductible. And the difference now is it'll be adding coinsurance. So really, what came forth is the plans are very similar. The deductibles are changing. The biggest difference is after the deductibles, you had no coinsurance. Blue Cross Blue Shield would pay 100%. The new plans now, after the deductibles, there's an 80/20, where Clay would now be reimbursing back 20% and Blue, or HAP would be reimbursing back 80%. So really, when it shows that .3% increase, the actual renewal came back a negative 4.5% for the middle plan, and a negative 2.5% for the far-right plan. And I'll kind of go through the plan designs as we go side by side. So if you look at the current plan, you have a $1,200 deductible for a single, $2,400 for a family. You're reimbursing that back through the health reimbursement account. And if you look at the very bottom, you'll see a 27060 figure there. That's your actual reimbursements. Little higher than I would expect to see for a township. Most of our townships run about a 30% reimbursement. You guys are actually running a 41%. So more people are utilizing the services than we'd expect to see. Now, if you look at the middle plan, that 1,224 was no longer available. So the middle plan shows a $1,500 deductible, jumping from 1,200 to $1,500 for a single, and going from 2,400 to $3,000 as a two-person or family. That's why it's in the red. You'll notice after that, the big difference is there was a 0% coinsurance. It's adding in actually 20% coinsurance. So now you'll be reimbursing those deductibles at 1,500, 3,000, plus 20%. There is a cap on that 20%. They cap the single at 2,500, and the family at 5,000. But your potential liability as employer goes from 1,000, or I'm sorry, 1,200 and 2,400 up to 4,000, 8,000 in this particular plan. So it increases that liability a lot more. The office visits actually drop. So the office visits, if you kind of look in the middle, you'll see medical co-pays. You had a $30 for a primary doctor, $50 for a specialist, $65 for urgent care, and $200 for emergency. Your primary is still $30, but urgent care goes from 50, or I'm sorry, specialty goes from 50 to 30. So that drops for the employees. Urgent care goes from 65 to 30, again, dropping for the employees. And the emergency room goes from 250 to 150. So in that way, it's a little richer of a plan, where in the other ways, it was not as rich. And at the very bottom, you'll, or kind of in the two-thirds down, you'll see medical prescription drug co-pays. Those have actually dropped, too. So instead of $15 for generic, it goes to $10. $40 for formulary, which is a kind of a layman's terms, a lower-cost name-brand drug, is still $40. It was 50% to 250, or 50% to 500 for name brands, so that's dropped to $80. So the co-pays are dropping quite a bit. It's gonna be a better plan for the employees. So I had mentioned, this plan actually went down 4.5% if you look at the premium. So why are we showing it as a plus 3% increase? If you look at that, I had mentioned that 27060 HRA reimbursement. If you look and slide over, because of your increased liability, we're changing that HRA reimbursement from 27,000 up to 60,500. We really have no way of knowing what it is, but looking at that 41% you're running currently, we're projecting that into the future with those increased deductibles and the increased coinsurance added on. So even though the premium dropped, your overall cost by reimbursing, we see as a potential 3% increase. The next plan over was another plan. It wasn't what they called mapped renewal. It was just kind of another consideration. I know that, I think, the individuals that we talked about was a little bit more favoring this one because it's a little less liability. Increases the premium because there's less liability, but it's pretty much the exact same plan that we just talked about, except instead of having a $1,500 deductible, it's only a $1,000 deductible for a single. Instead of, instead of having 3,000 for a family deductible, it drops to 2,000. So that also drops your potential, you know, exposure as well, because those were capped at 2,505,000 as well. So it drops your exposure 500 or $1,000. 500 a single, $1,000 for reimbursing. But since the premium went up, you know, we're showing a little less. HRA is 51975 because your, your HRA exposure's down, but your premium went up. But if you look at the two overall cost numbers, they're really very similar. They're $1,000 apart, not even that. So it's really kind of which one do you, you're more comfortable with. After that, we also looked at, and so we do have an increase there. I, I guess the good news is when we look at the retirees as well. I think we're having net savings of about 22,873, kind of showing my cards on the table. So if we look at the next page, they did the same thing with the retirees. The plans that you're currently in are being eliminated. They offered the same two options. The first one is, uh, the retirees under 65. The second kind of fold where you see the current plans are the retirees over 65. The retirees as a whole went up 23.6%, a pretty significant increase. But if we look at the next page, and this is kind of our strategy on these, is to take the retirees 65 and under and keep them where they are now, because there is no help from Medicare. If you're not on 65+, you're, you as employer are paying everything. There's another company that we're looking in the far-right column, and moving them to Medicare, a Medicare gap-type policy, which means what has, is gonna happen is Medicare's gonna pay first, and then the insurance will pay second, and you're reimbursing that. So, right now, you would have that liability of you're reimbursing back the first $1,000 and $2,000. Really, here, you'd only be reimbursing back the first 183, plus 20% up to $1,000. So your liability's actually gonna go down. We showed zero as the HRA responsibility, because the retirees were already included with that other number we had in there. So we weren't gonna show them twice. I added up everything kind of together with the strategy that we were talking about, and it shows overall about a savings of almost $23,000 if we move the retirees.
Would, um, can I jump in, Jack?
Yeah, please. Sure. If the board remembers, um, last year, you know, we, we were just straight insurance with, we didn't do this HRA, where we refund the HRA. And our healthcare cost was about $600,000. Was that? That's, yeah, but Cindy must have told me.
It was 2000, for 2016, yes.
For 2016. This year, this current year, we're looking, because we're, we're doing this HRA concept, excuse me. We're looking at about a savings of $150,000 township-wide from what we were doing the year before. So I was glad that these numbers came in. I know Jack and Kristi and Cindy and I, uh, we, we talked, that we have these basically two options. The second option, it's not even $1,000. It's a little, little bit more, but there's less liability of, if someone gets really sick, we're tapped. We, we have a lot less, uh, area to go down. And I think Jack would agree. He kind of recommends us to go with the, the second one, the, it would be the PPO LG 1,020%, right?
Yeah, I think the four of us kind of looked at it and said, because of the increased liability that you're getting kind of forced upon you with the new plan design, let's minimize that as much as possible. You know, even as already mentioned, the, the concept of the health reimbursement account is you go to a larger deductible, which drops the cost. With that savings of costs, you reimburse back the employees, and the concept is only about 30% of the employees go significantly into their deductibles, where 70% don't. As I mentioned, you guys were at 41%, but you're still driving a, a really large savings. So you're kind of taking a baby step into self-insurance by taking that little liability on.
So, um, and there, there again, too, I mean, it's a no-brainer. Moving the, um, 65 and over retirees to this plan is, is a significant savings.
It really is. And we've moved several townships and county road commissions over, and it's been extremely positive. I went through that quick, and I, I kind of, I, when we had a meeting, it was much longer, and I know, under this format. Is there any questions? Because I did, I realized I went through it probably pretty fast.
I would make the motion that the township would approve us going with the PPO LG, a HAP, PPO LG 1,020%. And then also moving the retirees over 65 to, um...
The health insurance services.
Health Insurance Solutions. Uh, and that's a considerable savings. And, uh, that's my motion. Any discussion or questions for Jack? That's all we need, because others were keeping the same, right?
Yeah, and even, even with the potential increase of the 3% because of the retiree savings, we're saving overall almost 23,000.
I'm gonna edit my motion that the retirees under 65 will keep in the same plan as we currently have.
It's being changed.
Well, right.
Yeah, but stay within HAP.
Right.
Correct.
Support.
Okay, we have motion support. Any, uh, other discussions or questions? I mean, it's incredible. I mean, we, we had a huge savings last year. Now we're, we're even whittling another 3% when everyone, I mean, we, I, I was hearing horror stories of 15, 18% increases, so...
When I first called HAP.
You the mayor.
Yeah, when I first called HAP, and it's, I would, we're gonna administer that HRA for you, and we'll save you some money there.
Right.
I, I always say, I don't take credit for the bad ones, so I can't take credit for the good ones. But when I did call HAP, and Cindy and I were talking at that point, when you were going from that small group to large group, they told me you expect about a 30 to 40% increase, and I've seen that with other townships. So to get a actual, was it, I said, almost 5% decrease was very pleasant, right? What you're doing, I do, and, and your side, too. We don't see it very often.
And these are estimated costs, because we don't know how much we're gonna have to pay out back, you know? As people get sick, we have to pay the, their, uh, their deductibles.
You also have fluctuation, and it's gonna be your open enrollment, so people can come on the plan, off the plan. So it's, it's kind of a snapshot of where you are in this time with your...
It's based on your model.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's right. So if you had some people leave and some other people come on, it's gonna change a little bit, but it won't change significant.
So just to clarify, for the under 65, is that the first one listed under the mapped renewal?
The second one.
It's basically going to mirror the same for the active employees, correct?
Correct. Yeah, we'll do those. Yeah, so the, the retirees under 65, and the actives will have that 1,020% of what we're gonna do.
Employees are gonna receive the same coverage.
Actually, it's gonna be better because they're gonna have lower co-pays. So they're gonna, it...
Win-win.
Yeah, yeah. It's gonna be better because they're gonna have lower co-pays in their office visits and their prescriptions, but, you know, still they reimburse back their deductibles, and now they need coinsurance.
And we already scheduled, uh, some meetings, whatever we decide. I think it's December 6th, if I remember right.
Yeah, I think it's December 6th. We're gonna have three meetings, two with the actives and one with retirees.
Yeah, to go over the employees. Did you get that? Um, I gave it to all the, um, employees, and I sent the, uh, the summary of benefits to, to the union stewards. I haven't heard one, one hiccup. I mean, it's, it's gonna cost them less.
Yeah.
So, and us less.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what I call a win-win.
So that meeting will be here with...
Yes.
During the day?
You got the times and stuff?
2:00 and 6:00 for the actives.
And 4:00 for the retirees.
And 4:00 for the retires, retirees.
4:00 be retirees over 65.
Yes, over 65.
The other retirees under 65 can go to either 2:00 or 6:00.
Yeah, it's the same plan.
Yeah.
Well, it seems as though you had extensive meetings and...
Oh, yeah, we did. And, and he shot it with all the other companies, too. They were just, they weren't even close, so I'm, I'm not gonna waste the paper.
Yeah, right.
Any more discussion? Looks like a good comprehensive presentation.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shurkey.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have to authorize a new bank account for administering the HRA that we just talked about.
I'll make a motion to approve a new bank account for the HRA healthcare account.
Support. Okay, a motion of support. It's basically so it's easier to administer the, what goes in, what goes out. So, what bank are we gonna do this? And are we gonna do this in, um, North Star, I assume?
That would be my recommendation.
Okay.
I'll amend my, my motion to specify North Star.
All right. Any more discussion? All in favor of opening up a new bank account for our HRA at North Star, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, we have a discussion with board. Michael Michaud. New business on Harson's Island. And, uh, jump in if I'm wrong, but go ahead. You wanna...
I'm gonna give you this and apologize for not having enough caution.
Yeah, we, we have it.
Oh, you have this?
Yeah, oh, yeah, we got it together.
No apology needed.
But he, he's looking at, uh, doing, uh, a new business in downtown San Souci on Harson's Island. And correct me if I'm wrong. We're talking about a winery and distillery?
You are correct.
Okay, which I'm all about.
Well, then that's all I need. Thank you.
Okay. And it's gonna, basically, he's going to occupy two buildings that are vacant currently right now. I did talk to Sid, our billing inspector, and our planner. He doesn't see any significant issues or problems, you know, but it has to go before the planning commission yet.
That's my understanding.
And Michael says that we have to, I have, or the board has to, township has to fill this out for the liquor control commission.
That's correct.
So, basically, I need permission for, actually, the clerk, it says clerk, to fill this out. I would, this is so you can go ahead with this special license you're getting?
Yes, that's, this is one of the first steps in proceeding with the Michigan licensing.
Okay.
This in no way says that you're giving me permission to do anything, it's just simply saying, hey, we're on board, go ahead and continue with the process. That's what this document is.
Have you approached the state on recreational licensing?
Oh, there is. This is a different type, because they're actually making the alcohol.
Oh, okay, right, manufacturer.
Yeah, you know, recreational, those are hard to come by.
Yeah, and I don't want anything to do with that.
That's big money, those.
Don't ask.
Yeah.
That's a good question.
This is basically just your first step in your application process?
That's correct.
And, you know, we don't wanna be a speed bump for him. He still has to go in front of the planning commission and the liquor control commission, they're gonna want sign-offs from probably our fire chief and our police chief.
This is just the feds.
This is just the first step, so...
So, this is gonna be craft's beer, like craft?
No, I don't, I'm not gonna make beer.
Just wine?
Wine and spirits. And, yeah, this is the first step, again, in the Michigan part of it, but I've already given them the feds, I've given them my tax returns, my fingerprints, my permission to have a full background check, so it's a very thorough process, and there's lots and lots of hoops, this is one of them.
How many people do you think you're gonna employ?
Well, I don't know, I'd like to employ quite a few.
Probably have a lot of volunteers for testers.
Yeah, there's a line, there's a line. But realistically, I hope to, at least a half a dozen is to start with.
Good.
Yeah, outside of salespeople and others. But actually, at the facility, we're gonna have to have probably half a dozen at least.
Sounds good.
What's your projected timeframe, assuming everything goes smoothly with your process here?
When that ice is off the channel and the boats start coming back through, I'd like to be ready, so I'm looking at June, I think that's optimistic. But that's what I'm told, we could make June if we work hard and keep moving.
Now, question, you say, you said two vacant buildings, are you, which buildings are you referring to?
Is it...
You said two.
Hoppy, Hoppy's building?
And then I'd like to take over the building next door.
Do you have any concept drawings, business plan, anything, are we proceeding that, or mean, do we expect to see those in the future, does that go right to...
It goes right to the planning commission, yeah, he has to provide the planning commission with all that engineer drawings and site plan.
Exactly, they're working on those now as well, those are part of the state application and the federal, complete drawings of the facility and location, detailed drawings, what the layouts are gonna be, all of that is part of the application process as well, and that stuff I'll have to submit to your...
Yeah, and it goes to our department heads, they all have to sign off on it.
Health inspection, inspection by the liquor commission, so there'll be no stone unturned, believe me.
He's gonna be a busy man.
Yes, that's the truth.
So, do you have the Michigan liquor control application filled out?
Yes, I do, yeah.
With the type of license that you're requesting?
Yes, ma'am.
Because that's all information that needs to be in this resolution.
Yes, I have an attorney who's doing all that, it's way too complicated for me, and he'll be happy to answer any of your questions, I'll provide you with his contact information. And we've been kinda going back and forth with him. We've already submitted the federal applications.
So, you have to get ahold of them to get this filled out? They're not gonna give you the information, you have to ask for them.
Well, I can help with getting all of that filled out.
I would think that you would wanna have all this and send to her instead of her going for it.
Exactly, I just need you fine folks to say, Mike, go ahead and see if you can get this done.
Well, the resolution is to approve the application, and we haven't even seen the application, I'm not trying to be difficult, but I, you know, when I'm looking at the resolution, that's what we're, the application from you for the following license, which isn't here, you know, if you have that information and the application for us to review, then we can certainly attach this at our next meeting and pass it.
Yep.
But I tried to explain to Cindy that I kinda needed this information in there in order to be able to have it on the agenda to approve today.
Because we're approving a blank.
No, I'm not asking you to blank that. The application itself, you know, there is, I mean, it's blank, it's blank, I mean, it's not submitted, it can't be submitted without this paper. That's part of the process of it, so I'm here today to introduce myself, answer any questions about my plans, and then talk about this and try to stay under three minutes.
Okay, well, hold on.
You're on the agenda, so you get a little bit longer than...
Yeah.
Because I can talk about this for a long time.
I mean, I don't wanna talk for my whole board here, but myself, like Cindy mentioned, I'd like to see at least, you know, the kind of license we're gonna do and a few blanks, and then I myself would have no problem passing this.
Sure.
So, if you can get with us and fill in the blanks, and we'll, I'll make a motion that we postpone this to our next meeting.
Yeah, I'll fill that out.
Yep.
I'll get all the information, and I'll come back.
It was just on the agenda as a discussion with the board, so we don't have to postpone it, we can just put it on the agenda when he has the application completed.
Yep, I'll come back next time, I think it's the third.
Yeah.
And in the meantime, I'll provide any information to you guys.
Yeah, we actually have a meeting, what, in two weeks, 18th?
Is it?
Is it? No.
Fourth.
Fourth.
December 4th.
Yeah.
Double number.
I know.
Thanksgiving is Thursday.
It's coming quick. Dates on the calendar are closer than they appear.
That's the truth.
I mean, is there any, anything you'd like to know about myself, I'll be happy if...
No, not yet, we'll get to that later.
How long have you been doing it?
Well, that would be illegal.
How long have you lived out here?
But I'm an engineer at Ford, so I know a lot about how things work.
How long have you been in the manufacturing of spirits?
I've never manufactured an illegal spirit, but I know an awful lot about it from a conceptual standpoint, and my background as a Ford engineer is going to help me tremendously with those processes.
So, you don't have a process in the works?
I have made a lot of wine, a lot of wine, I've grown my own grapes, I've made wine for 20 years, I make beer occasionally, it's not my favorite thing to make, I just, I have a passion for wine.
What kind of spirits are you thinking about?
I would love first to produce a really nice bourbon, that takes a little bit more time, but initially, we would do a nice vodkas, gins.
Oh, man.
Some sort of rum, even though unfortunately, we don't have cane sugar fields, so I'm gonna have to compromise and bring... Yeah, they don't work, I researched it, yeah, that's unfortunate. I was really excited about that, I thought, man, we got sugar beets, oh, I can buy them at the gas station to make rum. But you can't use those, so I'm gonna have to compromise and get the cane molasses from New Orleans, so that's, I've looked into that, and that's fine. The rest of the ingredients, what I'd like to do is source it completely from Michigan, if I could get some of these guys on Harson's Island to grow me some winter wheat and rye, we could have, we could have local ingredients, if not, I get the stuff, all the ingredients from the Dexter Mill, they have organic grains there, they provide the grains for distilleries around Ann Arbor, so we'll do that, Michigan has fantastic winter wheat, that's the same as what Gray Goose uses, we're on the same plane as them, and I think mine's better, will be better.
Will be.
It will be, yes.
Get with me, I can hook you up with some people that might help you out with that.
Yeah, that would be fun.
Consumption? No, not the consumption, the supply.
Well, I know who would like to open a party.
Yeah, so, but I know some people that might help you out as far as growing some stuff.
Oh, that'd be great.
Growing wheat.
We're not talking about medical marijuana.
No, I was gonna say, this is spirits.
We have opted out, sir.
Wheat, wheat. We have not opted in. Okay, sounds good, nice meeting you, and...
My pleasure, thanks very much.
Help us fill out the blanks, and we'll get you on the next agenda.
Okay, great.
And, I'm looking forward to this, and if you need any of our help, let...
I appreciate it.
Let us know.
Well, I can tell you wanna help, and I'll give you the opportunity.
You might do yourself a good favor by getting as much of the application completed and turned into the township clerk, maybe the Wednesday or Thursday prior to our meeting, in case there's any questions, or if we need to do any research, that way you don't get held up in the next meeting.
Are you saying you wanna see the actual Michigan liquor license application?
Yes, that's what we have to approve.
Yeah, just give us a copy.
That application, so we need to see that application.
Yep, will do, no problem.
All right, perfect.
Anything else I can do for you? Well, then have a great Thanksgiving, and again, thank you, sincerely thank you for your help.
All right, thank you, Michael.
Thanks for coming.
Keep your spirits high.
All right, next we have, as everyone's aware, I'm, we're in the process of hopefully developing a kayak access site on Harson's Island along with a bike trailhead, and to get the funding from the DNR trust fund, we have to have a couple, or at least one public hearing, but I wanted to do two, one on the mainland, one on Harson's Island. I do have a rough draft of a concept drawing, and I will, it needs to be updated and changed. I personally don't want to pay for the engineers to do three revisions, I wanna wait till after the public hearing, but I can get to that in a little bit, but I'd like to make a motion that we set public hearings for proposed kayak access site, December 18th, Clay Township Hall here at 7:00, and also January 22nd, 2018, at the Harson's Island Lions Hall, 2:30 La Croix.
2019, or 18?
18, and that will also be at 7:00 PM. So, we have a motion for two public hearings on the proposed kayak access site. Support. Okay, motion, support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, and what I did wanna do is, our parking lot's over by the road, that's a long truck to drag the kayaks back, I wanted to put a road with a dropping off and loading site there, also, if there was an emergency, the EMTs could get pretty close to the dock for access, so, where that walking path is, that will probably be a 20-foot wide access road to going down towards the drain, so... All right, where am I?
Are we going to move the meeting for January 22nd?
Yes.
To the island?
Yes. Let's make, you wanna make that motion?
Make a motion to amend our meeting dates, so that January 22nd, 2018, instead of meeting at the meeting hall here, we will change that location to the Harson's Island Lions Hall at 7:00 PM immediately following the public hearing.
Okay, we have motion, do we have support? Support. Okay, we have motion, support, any discussion? So, we're gonna move our second meeting in January over to Harson's Island. Hearing none, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Okay, fifth, Point Planning Commission members, Kathy Swycar, Ed Keller, and Harold Bain. Actually, Harold's sitting in the back, if you want to wave hi to everybody.
Hi, Harold.
So... We'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Kathy Swycar, Harold Bain, and Ed Keller to the planning commission.
Do we have support?
Support.
Okay, we have motion, support, any discussion? Anyone have any questions for Harold, he's gonna be new, he's in the building field, how long have you lived in the township, Harold?
Since 1996, I've been in the building trades for almost 30 years, I'm in right now the building trades.
Let him handle it.
Oh, should come on up, thanks.
I got two houses starting on the island next year, and I'm an air conditioning refrigeration mechanic, that's why I'm late, I was on a roof, so, I know a lot about zoning and, yeah.
Harold has applied for appointments to various boards many times because of his interest in the community, so, I think he'll work out well.
All right, any questions for Harold? All right, thanks. All right, do we have any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have appointment of ZBA members, Brian Treppa and Bonnie McLeary.
McInerney.
Or McInery Sattler.
Slater.
Slater. Okay, I've been messing all those names up. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint ZBA members Brian Treppa and Bonnie McInerney Slater.
Support.
Okay, motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carry, oh, anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving right along, we have a clerk's request to, for BSNA software license.
Normally, I just put this in the bills payable, but I figured you guys would all question it anyway, so I just threw it on the agenda, once you have 18, what's 19? But this is the software the township uses department-wide, at the administrative level, for taxes, special assessments, assessing accounts payable, actually, we use everything but the payroll system from BSNA, this is their annual maintenance amount that they charge us, they tend to update usually monthly, and I believe they keep a backup, don't they?
Yeah.
So, this is for all of the software, I believe, accounts payable, yeah?
All the modules.
Yeah, all the modules. So, it's an amount of $8,832, line item 101-265-760, which is computer and software, and it is budgeted.
Is it a lease, or an update, or...
It's a license.
A license?
Yeah.
Okay.
Licenses and updates.
Right.
Maybe I can make a motion that we approve the BSNA software license, and this is an annual commitment?
Yes.
In the amount of $8,832.
Okay, do we have support?
Support.
Okay, we have motion, support, any discussion on that?
How often do they update?
Every month.
Usually monthly.
Every monthly?
Yeah, first of the month, turn it on, and they all update.
This is what keeps us, all our departments going.
Yeah, it's our enterprise software. Yeah, I think if we didn't have it, everyone would quit.
Sounds like a monopoly.
What other communities in Mississippi use that?
About 90% of the state of Michigan use BSNA.
Okay, I probably asked this once before, but...
Yeah.
No, it's all right.
Somebody's wealthy.
Is this amount consistent with years prior and expected to stay the same?
Yep.
It also integrates, you know, when you look your taxes up online, you go to BSNA, you know, that's the same.
Pay your water bill online, integrate, you know, it's a pretty robust system.
So, if you go on there and you see all the other townships and cities that are listed there, that's everybody that uses BSNA, so, quite a few of them.
They've been around a long time.
Yep. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the renewal of the BSNA software license, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the clerk wants to get a couple, some election computer laptops, five of them.
Yep, as Joanne had asked earlier about the state providing us new election equipment, we did have quite a bit of money budgeted to purchase that equipment initially, as the state did not believe that they would be able to cover the full cost for it, so at this time, I would like to, I think, believe what we had budgeted was about $10,000, that we did not end up using for the equipment itself, but as I explained to Joanne earlier in them cases, that was just to encompass two of our machines, we're $360, $370 apiece, but I would also like to, at this time, replace laptops while we have some money set aside and budgeted for our election workers, the ones they're currently using are about five or six years old, the screens are rather small and dim, it's hard to read, especially in the atmosphere of the high school gym. So I'd like to be able to get them something a little bit larger and easier to read and work with. They don't need to be anything of a high memory or anything in particular other than carry Windows 10 and be able to have a program installed on it. So we can buy the cheapest laptops we could find. I did opt to find one with a 17-inch screen and found them for $379.99. So I'd like to make a motion to purchase five of those, along with a carrying case at $27.99 each, for a total of $2,039.90 from line 101-262-760.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support, any more discussion?
Are those computers married to one another and are they on the internet? Or are they just?
No, they're not allowed to be on the.
Individual programs?
Yeah.
We only use them for the elections, so with election time, we open them up, we load the program on it, we load our voters' list on it. After the election, we delete it all off, we pack them back up, and they get stored. So that's why I said we don't need to buy any expensive laptops, but we do want ones that are in good working condition and still update the windows.
Great, thank you.
Having worked on an election before, these will be much appreciated because of the, the ones that we currently are working with need a little, little to be desired.
Okay, we have motion, support, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of purchase of election computers for the amount of $2,039.90, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, next we have a resolution, 2017-36, for assessing waiving penalties and property tax, property transfer affidavit. David, Dave, I'm having problems today. This is so we can conform with our State Tax Commission and our AMAR auditing. They basically said, you know what, you need to pass this resolution so we don't get our hands slapped.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2017-36, waiving penalties on property transfer affidavits.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Basically, these penalties are at $5, and it's not worth even tracking. You know, it's, it's really not, so that's why we want to do this. Motion and support, any more discussion?
What's the difference between the principal residence and this property transfer affidavit?
The principal residence is, it lets you file a court of exemption from this property. This is just a transfer affidavit following if any property transfer is filed locally.
Okay, principal or not, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a transfer. How many do, how many transfers do we get a year? Lots of them. But, okay. All right, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Arnie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have Parks and Rec. As you saw, or noticed in my supervisor's report, we have a bus trip going down to the new Little Caesars Arena and for, see a hockey game through Parks and Rec. And we, we, we have a bill for all the tickets for $2,400, so it has to come before the board for approval. We, it's almost sold out, it will be sold out. So this is money in, money out, plus we'll probably make a few bucks on it. So we just need the board's approval to pay this bill.
I'll make a motion to pay the Detroit Red Wings invoice in the amount of $2,400.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Thank, thank you. Next, we have police on duty gear, five Class A uniforms. Mike couldn't be here, he had another representative scheduled to come here, and he couldn't be here, they have shorthanded and everything's going on and.
Let me get the letter.
Yeah.
So a letter from Chief Coach, "I'm seeking approval for the board to purchase Class A uniforms for our command staff. It is my goal to start with the command staff and eventually outfit the entire department. I believe these, this, these will project a very professional look for our agency when worn at formal functions." The cost, the cost of our outfit to command staff is $2,567. This is a budgeted line item to be removed from line item 207-000-971-00. Please contact Chief Coach if you have any questions.
Okay, that pretty well sums it up.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of five Class A uniforms in the amount of $2,567 from line item 207-000-971-00.
Support.
Okay, motion and support, any discussion? I, I, I wanted to mention too that I, I know, talked to Chief George Rose of the Fire Department, we'd like to eventually do this with the command staff in the Fire Department too, going forward, so.
I think that's a fantastic idea.
Yes, it builds a lot of pride and it shows us, you know, it, it's a good, good thing all the way around.
Just for success.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of purchase of on-duty Class A, five Class A uniforms are $2,567, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next, we have police asset disposal. We have some cars we have to get rid of, and the policy is, in our policy manual, that our board has to approve to dispose of, of the equipment. It's really up to the supervisor to say how we're going to do that, whatever is best for the, as long as we do closed bids or, or auction or it's fair, you know. I can't sell it to my brothers, which they wouldn't buy it, I wouldn't sell it to them anyhow. But, and we have nine cars, nine vehicles, and we are going to do an auction, and as it says in our letter, but basically just need permission to dispose of these, these vehicles.
I'll make a motion to approve the Police Department asset disposal list as presented.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support, any discussion?
I, I would think it would be good for Chris to read this letter also, so the public knows the process that it's going to be done.
Letter from Chief Michael Coach, "I'm seeking approval from the board to send our retired police vehicles to auction. I've attached a list of the vehicles that will be sold. The auction will be conducted by Motor City Auction in Frazier. Motor City handles the sale of retired municipal vehicles for several jurisdictions in this area. They will pick them up and determine if the vehicle will bring more revenue from the auction or retail sale. The fee charged by Motor City to pick up these vehicles and bring them to auction would be $165 per vehicle. Please let me know if you have any questions."
It's very economical to do this and put it on eBay and fueling all the questions and everything, and they, they do get a, a pretty good audience as far as, you know, little taxi cab guys buying Crown Vics and for parts and, I mean, it works out around pretty good all the way around.
If you notice, the biggest benefit is that it has freed up nine parking spaces.
That's outstanding.
Yes.
So do.
Like desire. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'd like this. I'm out.
Go, Sandy, go.
Support.
All the accessories on the vehicles and all that gets stripped off?
Yeah.
Is it?
Yeah.
My turn.
Sure.
I would like to see, make sure that we have a report back to the board for the total that we received for all of these.
Yeah, we will.
And itemize each one of them, that we got so much for this one, so much for that one. And another, and another question I ask is, it, from the description, it doesn't look like any of them would be adequate to replace our zoning ordinance car?
Assessor, yeah.
Yeah.
No. No, I, we actually, we took the, that car needed some tires, and we robbed, one of the older Crown Vics had.
You're talking about Jim's?
Yeah, that's what she asked.
No, she's talking about the Taurus.
Oh, the Taurus?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I don't think so.
But we need to look at something in the future.
Yeah, yeah.
For that Taurus.
Yeah.
It's a great car. Okay.
Been around a long time.
Yeah. All right, so do we have motion and support?
No.
No.
We have a motion. I made the motion to approve the Police Department asset disposal.
I supported it.
As presented.
She supported it.
Yep, we have support down there.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and support, any more discussion on this? Specific motion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, 13, fire asset dispose, or asset disposal for the Fire Department. We have ambulance that we're not using anymore, and as you see in George's letter, we do have an offer for $15,000.
Do we want to use this and move our Taurus?
Yeah.
Our what?
The Taurus.
No, we're not driving the ambulance around.
It's probably more reliable.
Safer.
Do we, hey, there's a.
You can get there faster.
That's true.
Should, should we have George get up and?
Yeah.
Good evening. We have this 2003 American Le France ambulance. Since we went to BLS, we have not used the vehicle, and it's been sitting in the station. TriHospital is, is interested in it. They're going to use it for some type of a command or support vehicle in their fleet. It's not doing us any good right now, it's just sitting there. We could use the money to go towards some new equipment.
Can't foresee any future plans for it?
I don't see it at this time.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we support the asset disposal of the current American Le France ambulance, ambulance from the, the Fire Department.
Support, in short order, this ambulance is going to be right up there with the rest of our equipment that needs to be replaced, just based off of age.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
And actually, this, this is pretty much what we have invested in it too. It's going to be pretty close to a wash, isn't it?
Yes.
So we're not taking a hit by any means.
She go.
Which is, is a good thing. Any more discussion? Okay, we have a motion to dispose Fire Department assets of ambulance, and all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. And next, we have a fire new hire, Donovan, Donovan Huber. Got it right. With training Fire One, Fire Two.
I'm asking permission to bring on Donovan. He is one of our cadets, he's been in our cadet program. He is actually the chief of the cadets. He does respond to calls, assists, taking reports, helping service the trucks, and getting anything basically we need on a fire scene. He also helps around the station when we come back from the calls. Donovan will be a great asset to our department. He is a student at Algenack High School, he is a senior this year. He will be graduating in the spring. So if you so decide to bring him on, I also would like to send him to firefighter one and firefighter two, which will start in January. This will meet his schedule by him going to school, it'll be in the evenings on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and every other Saturday, so this will work in the schedule and go into school. So when he gets out of school, we'll be able to put him right to work.
I'll make a motion to hire, new hire Donovan Huber with training for firefighter one and two, effective immediately.
Support.
Chief, can we hire him immediately, or do we have to wait till he turns 18?
He won't be until 18 is what our, which our, our rules are in our department. He'll be 18 on the 27th. So if we bring him on now, it'll be effective the 28th, 27th.
You want to amend your?
I'll amend the motion to make that effective on the 27th.
27th, did you break that?
What, what about the, the, the training? Do we want to put that in your, your motion? Or is that going to be a separate motion?
He said with training.
Said with training, correct?
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Support.
Thanks, Chris. You can slap that, you're welcome, sorry.
At the cost of $650.
$650, right.
Yeah, there, there are some department policies regarding the training that we provide and pay for, correct, as far as what our expectations are at, should we pay for that training with him in relation to the department? And Donovan, you understand all of that?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and support of hiring new hire Donovan Huber, and that also includes, effective November 27th, happy birthday, and that also includes training firefighter one and two, costs of $650. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion passes.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Donovan.
It's a good, Donovan's a good kid, a young man, good kid. Yep.
I suppose he already has turnout gear?
I'm going to have to order some, and his dad's a little upset because he's getting new turnout gear.
Sorry, Bill.
You didn't hear that, did you, Bill?
Okay.
So we do have 14B.
Yep, 14B is to, to an interim hire of, or promotion of Carl Bailey to captain.
As you know, Cody has resigned from the department. He went up to City of Port Huron, and that left us without a captain. So Carl has filled that position in the past, he was a safer personnel on the department, and he's been in the department for some time, and I felt that I, that I would like to put him in that position until January 1st of 2018. And then we're going to select, or we're going to open up the officers' positions then.
So do you want it, I mean, do you plan on January 1st having someone to put in that position?
I, what I did is I, December 1st, I'm going to put up the qualifications for each position for officers, and then they'll be able to apply for those positions if they meet those qualifications, and then I will bring it to the board for your approval.
Do we want to keep him on as captain until our first board meeting in January?
We can do that if that's okay.
That way you don't, that way you don't have any laps in.
Let's, let's just not put a day on, just make him interim fire for captain.
Until you decide to.
But, yeah, just to let the board know, he's looking at, you know, all, all the offices, office positions.
You can, you can post it effective what date you want to make a decide on and put it into the board, and then, you know, when you replace him, then, if, if and when you replace him, then you would no longer be.
Or it becomes permanent.
Right. I'll make a motion to approve the Fire Department appointment of interim captain Carl Bailey.
Support.
Yeah, motion and law support, any, any discussion?
That is effective immediately, correct?
Yes, yes. I did have a little conversation with, actually, last weekend, it went very well, he's very motivated, and he's going to be a good fit, so. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, next, we have under fire mandated testing on 40 of the, our packs. The, go ahead, Chief.
This is a required test that's done to these packs. We have two style of packs, we have a regular SCB and we have a Seabird pack. The Seabird pack has to be done every year, and the regular pack is done every two years. Well, it fell into that cycle where we got to do both packs this year. And it's, it'll cost $50 per pack, and we have 40 packs that we have to get done. And it's mandated, or it's required by NFPA and MIOSHA.
I'll make a motion to approve the mandated testing for 40 SCBs at $2,000.
Support.
Okay, motion and support, any discussion? I believe the line item is 765, I'd have to double check, I know we have it.
It's 93201.
Is it 93201? Okay.
764 would be your camera.
Yeah.
This is mandated testing.
Right, mandated. Okay, thank you. Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Moving right along, we have a request to purchase thermal imaging camera. Chief?
Yes, we have two thermal imaging cameras in our department. They're around 20 years old. The technology is more advanced now. Some of the problems we have with those cameras is they don't make the charging system for the batteries anymore, and technically, we don't have any thermal imaging cameras that we can use in our department. We have two little, or four little handhelds, two on this, on the main station here, and two for on the island. We do, I should say, we do have a thermal imaging camera on the island in Engine One, which is a Scott. Our two ISA cameras are pretty much shot to us. I'm requesting to purchase a FLIR camera. It's $1,300, and 1360 plus a vehicle charger. This will help us get by until we can put in for a fire safety grant here in the next couple of months, and then we can purchase two new ones to meet our needs in the Fire Department.
Are you okay with that?
At this time, yes.
Okay. With the, and correct if I'm wrong, Chief, but they use these for a number of things, but if you have a room full of smoke, and you can't see anybody, they can actually detect if someone's in it with this camera.
Heat images. We can do that.
It's to detect hot spots inside wall cavities, right?
Hot spots in walls.
Yep. It's a very important tool.
So, are we looking for one or two?
Purchase one at this time.
Yep.
Because it's two down. It says...
Well, well...
The quote was for two.
Yeah, he got a quote for two, but he just wants to do the one right now.
So, that would be half of it.
1686.
Can I make a motion that we authorize the purchase for the Fire Department of a FLIR K2 thermal imaging camera in the amount of $1,686?
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have a contract. This is between Clay Township and TriHospital for contract, or for EMS services. It goes through 10/22, and usually, I'm nervous about signing something that goes past our term, but it does have a out, anytime we can get out with 180-day written notice. So, if another board wanted to, or we wanted to later, we can get out of this contract.
Yep, but it's going to auto-renew without notice unless we give that notice by 4/4 of 18, and on 4/4 of 18, it's going to auto-renew until 10/12 of '22, which is the end.
Yeah. I must apologize, because I was going to try to get hold of Ken Cummings on here. Let's have him, and I was going to have him change that date to after the day, if there's a new board, and what was the date?
Well, for whatever reason, he has it set to auto-renew on 4/14 of 18. That's when we have to give him notice by if we decide not to renew it.
See, we got to do it in 20.
And if, once it auto-renews on 4/4/18, it's good for four years until 10/12 of '22.
I'm going to have him push that date back to, if it's okay with this board.
So, should this say service expires 10/12 of '17?
No, 20.
20.
20.
The anniversary.
If we don't tell them by April?
Right.
We have to give them notice by April that we want to expire it, term it in October of 18, and if we don't, it will automatically renew until October of '22, so... I mean, I would say December of '20 unless a new board.
Yep, exactly. Also, in here under...
Unless he wants more of a notice, then you have to put that out, because that's why there's like a six-month notice we have to provide.
On page 200 of the scope, under D, acknowledges that the PSAP for Clay Township will be handled from St. Clair County Central Dispatch Authority. I want them to change this to Clay Township Dispatch, because we do it, and the county doesn't, so I want this to reflect that in there.
And D is reflected as Clay Township.
Right.
That's a good catch.
So, if you want, if you so desire, if you want to allow me to sign this contract, given the two changes, changing the auto-renewal date by, to 12 December 20, and that, under D, change St. Clair County Central Dispatch to Clay Township Dispatch.
Somebody make a motion?
Nope, nobody did. I'll make a motion to approve the service contract for TriHospital with the automatic renewal, which we have amended, and also line item, I'm not line item, but item D in the contract to reflect that change to Clay Township. Does that make sense? Did I get it all in there?
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion and support. So, I'll restate the motion to accept the service contract at TriHospital, as long as I make the following changes, auto-renew without notice by 12/20, when we have a new board, and under D, in scope of service, the dispatching will be done by Clay Township Dispatch. Roll call, vote please.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Brison?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, last but not least, we have, actually, the county approved our grant, matching fund grant for St. John's Drive, and we have to pass a resolution to accept that. It's a 50-50 match. The estimated project cost is $90,000, and Township will contribute $45,000 for the project, and so will the St. Clair County Road Commission will also do $45,000 on this. You know, we've been very successful with this. This is actually a very nice program. I first got in the office, they basically told me, this is all, you can get this every other year, and I've applied for every year, and so this is the fifth one we've gotten.
Okay.
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 And...
Make the motion.
Yeah, so, it's a good, it's a good program, and truthfully, I... I, yeah, I have to tell you, I go to a lot of these Michigan Township Associations and meetings, and all over the state, a lot of the townships in different counties, they just complain about their road commission. I got to tell you, we have a pretty good one.
We work well with them.
Yeah, they, I give them kudos all the time, so... Any discussion on that? Oh, we don't have a motion yet, do we?
I'll make a motion to approve the local road match funding for St. John's Drive for $45,000.
Support.
And this is going to be about an inch and a half layer of asphalt, plus we have money in there. There's a couple places, there's an old tree that's, the roots are busted up, the road, it's got to come out, and there's some, you know, some rolly courses. I think we got about $15,000 in this number budget to make the base better where it needs to be done. We already replaced a lot of the culverts that needed to be replaced on this road, and, yes, so... Any more discussion on that, on this? Hearing none. Roll call, vote please.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Christie Hilton?
Yes.
Artie Brison?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Oh, that's all our new business.
That's all.
Quick.
Yeah, 19 items. Good job, board. Moves us to board member comments. I had talked with Madison about this. Hey, Mark, how you doing?
Pretty good, thanks. I really don't have anything. We haven't had a planning commission in several weeks now. Looking forward to the next one. Hopefully, we'll get back the site condo, site plans that were shelved, or postponed until they figure out what they're going to do with the wetlands over there. Other than that, I'd like to thank all the departments here at Clay Township for a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne?
As a representative of, for the ZBA, Zoning Board of Appeals, we haven't had any meetings. We haven't had any appeals in the last few months, so, but we will have one in December, so I'll keep you apprised of what that's all about. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Yes. Cindy?
Um, I don't have anything.
Okay. How you doing, Sandy?
Good, how are you?
Pretty good.
I just wanted to say, congratulations, Chief Rose, for your new hire. I was encouraged by hearing him becoming, coming on full-time, mostly because of his age, and I hope that is a motivation to his peers to give you a little boost in your department, and I hope he continues to represent well like it seems he has been doing all along. Other than that, I wanted to thank everyone for coming out to elections. I had the pleasure of working the last one, and so many people from our community come out. It's always great to see people coming out on such a light ballot. Not a lot to vote on, but they still showed up, so, thank you.
Chris?
I'd like to congratulate the Elginak Muskrat Football Team, three wins away from another state championship, so it was really, really close. They worked their rear ends off and gave this town a lot to be proud of. So, congratulations, and wish everybody in Clay Township a happy Thanksgiving.
Christie?
I'd just like to remind everyone that winter tax bills will be mailing November 30th. We've had quite a few calls about when tax bills are coming out, so expect to see those, and I hope everyone has a safe and happy Thanksgiving.
You, too.
Thanks.
Thank you. I'd just like to say, you know, that we're in the middle of deer hunting season. A lot of deer are moving, so be careful driving. And what do we say, Chris? Don't veer for the deer.
Veer for deer.
Don't veer for deer. And I did want to give Carl Bailey and Donovan Huber congratulations. It's going to work out well for you, Chief, I think, and we got some good people coming on, and everything's, you know, really positive, as far as I can tell and see, and wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and be good neighbors with everyone. Everyone's starting to burn leaves and everything, and you know what? If the wind's blowing into your neighbor's house, eh, maybe put it off a day or something.
Guarantee nobody's windows are open or anything.
Well, yeah, but, you know.
When they're wet, when they're wet, they're so smoky.
But, other than that, like I say, everyone have a happy Thanksgiving and be safe.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Okay, all in favor, ayes. Let's get out of here. Thanks for coming, everybody. Good job. Thanks for coming.
Hannah, what time is it?
Cindy, Cindy?
8:24.
Cindy.
Hey, Coach Carroll.
Carroll.
Harold.
Harold.
Yes, sir.
We need your contact info, and I think they spelt your name wrong on the agenda. Yeah. Harold.